Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the Board of Commission, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky, regular meeting, October 18th, 2022, at 4:30. We will begin with our invocation and our pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to invite Reverend Lee from Mount Zion Baptist Church to come on up and give us the invocation. If you don't know Reverend Lee, you need to get to know him. He is such an amazing community leader. His church is always involved in so many wonderful things in our community. I want to thank you for all the work your church did during the tornado. I know it was pretty incredible that you, along with your National Association and State Association, together, their church was able to distribute $100,000 in local relief to our community. And then, back-to-school time, I know you're always out there partnering with the Bowling Green Police Department for a back-to-school bash around the Housing Authority. And I could just go on and on about the amazing ways that your church is such a bright light in our community. So, thank you for coming and just being such a wonderful part of our community, and thank you for starting our meeting off in the most important way.
Thank you all so much. Let's pray. Fathers, I, on so many occasions, have bowed to talk to you privately. I stand now to talk to you publicly. I stand in this space, God, to offer sacrifice of praise for all that you mean and all that you do in our lives. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you for city commissioners. We thank you, God, for their life, for their health. We thank you for their families, their strength. We thank you for their service. I lift them before you today because, Father, we understand that they are your servants. Today, your word teaches us to respect those and to pray for those who are in government. God, we pray for them today that you would give them a spirit of wisdom, give them guidance, that, Lord, as they make decisions for the common good of your people, that, Lord, they will not be persuaded by political affiliations and personal self-interests. But, God, they will vote according to your guidance and their consciousness today, understanding to whom much is given, much is required. I pray, Father, for Bowling Green, for every citizen today. I pray, Father, that Bowling Green will look like the kingdom of God, coming from all walks of life, different ethnicities, God, different languages. But, Lord, may one thing unite us, and that is our love. I pray today, Father, that we will not love with words only, but we will love in action. We will not love seasonally, but we will love at all times. I pray, Father, that you would bless us to take your business, and it would be done decently and in order. I pray against a spirit of confusion. God, when those hard issues, we're confronted with them, I pray, Father, that you would give them wisdom to make the right decisions, the right choices, not just knowing what the right things are, but being willing to do them and do them for the right reasons. We thank you in advance by faith, as we seek to work for justice and mercy, as we walk humbly with our God. Amen.
Thank you so much for your inspiring prayer. You'll join me in saying a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Lee. Thank you, Commissioner Beasley-Brown. We're going to start with a roll call tonight. Mrs. Jackson?
Commissioner Perigin?
Here.
Commissioner Bailey?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley-Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Mayor Alcott?
Here. Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. I'd like, we're gonna have a few kudos, and I'm gonna turn it over here to our city manager in just a second, but I'd like to say a kudos. I know, on behalf of our commissioners, we're very proud of the events that happened Saturday with the Bowling Green Harvest Festival. It was multiple events all day long, whether you were at Circus Square, or you were at Fountain Square, or you were at the Sokey Market, or whether you got to see the great pumpkins fall from the ladder trucks. It was quite a tremendous day. It was a tremendous activity, and it was good to see Bowling Green back at action. I just want to say thank you to the many partners, and I'm gonna give this to our city manager, and I know it delineates on down to many, many people that are in some of this room, but thank you, Jeff, for a wonderful event, and I'll applaud that.
Mr. Mizel, you have some items.
I take zero credit for the Harvest Fest. It's all about our people, our departments that put that together. If I start naming names, I'm sure I'll forget someone, leave someone out, but a lot of people involved with that. City and county, county also helped us out, so thank you to all the employees that volunteered their time on Saturday and all the work and effort that went into that to make it a great event, and the weather was beautiful, too. So, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of other congratulations I want to put out there is congratulations to Matt Barrow and Josh Minton in our Public Works Department. They recently completed the Kentucky, University of Kentucky Transportation Center's Rhodes, R-O-A-D-S Scholar Program and the Roadmaster Training Program this year. Both were among 188 Rhodes Scholars and 163 Roadmasters, and I wanted to congratulate them for their achievement with that. That's Matt Barrow and Josh Minton from our Public Works Department. Secondly, for the 11th year in a row, our Finance Department received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from Governmental Finance Officers Association. This reward basically puts a stamp of approval on our annual budget preparation and our presentation that we submit to the GFOA for their review and comments. And again, we passed with flying colors and will receive that award again for the 11th consecutive year for our budget that we put together, Katie. So, kudos to Katie, her staff, for all the work they do on this document. As you remember, it's about that thick, and we try to make it as, she tries to make it as easy and understandable as possibly can, so thank you, Katie. Congratulations. You want me to keep going?
I would.
All right. Under my comments section, I'd like to ask Buddy Steen with the WKU Innovation Center to come up and give you all kind of a brief update on what he's been working on out at WKU, the investment that the city made with his office, and what they've got going on. Buddy, I'll hand it off to you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Well, it's been a good year, I must say. With your support, we've accomplished quite a bit. And first thing we did was we changed our name. We changed our name to be more appropriate. We're now the Central Region Ecosystem for Arts, Technology, and Entrepreneurship. And so, that's what it's about. It's building an ecosystem and putting people together. We said we were gonna create a confidential living database of talent, and we did. It's alive. You're gonna start seeing marketing information about that. And this is about people that want to live in Bowling Green but have actually left Bowling Green for meaningful employment. And so, over the past 20 years, people have left Bowling Green, but many of them want to come back. I mean, most of them, it turns out, because we have such a wonderful place to live. Well, this is very important, because you've heard of brain drain? This is reverse brain drain, and the fact that it happened for 20 years, we're actually leveraging that. So, we're gonna be marketing to moms and dads and aunts and uncles that are here and friends, family that want to bring their friends and family back, and all they have to do is put their resume in our little drop box on the website. And the website address is create-ic, for Innovation Campus, -ic.com. And you'll be able to search that by Google and get there as well. We said we're gonna target and recruit more newly forming and existing technology companies. Well, here's the key. In order to do that, in this day and time, it's all about talent. You have to have the talent first to be able to recruit the companies or keep the companies when they grow. And so, that living database of talent that we talked about, that's thousands of people that will add to the workforce that's not even currently on the books. Not only when they come home will they have a job, but many of those people will bring their wealth, and they'll bring their network, and they'll bring their intellect, talent, and share it back with us here. So, talent is the key to being able to recruit those companies. With that database, we actually will recruit a high-tech named company, okay? We're gonna go out and find them. They want that talent, and it's an enormous amount of talent. The last time we kind of checked this, the tech companies said, not only do you have the jobs, people for the jobs, but these people will probably have the lowest, our company will have the lowest attrition rate in the Bowling Green section, because those folks are coming back because they want to be here, and they said, oh, by the way, we don't even think we'll have to pay relocation costs. So, this is a big deal, being able to recruit a named company like that. We're gonna do that this year, okay? This upcoming year. The second thing we're gonna do is we're gonna help companies expand. Like in Vision Aesc, they're coming in, they're bringing 2,000 jobs, they're spending $2 billion in their community, and they're gonna need people, they're gonna need talent. There's a lot of talent already in Bowling Green, but we need a lot more, okay, in order to make those type of companies grow and stay. We formed something called a Metals Cluster this year. This is a very unique kind of thing. There's not, there's not one in the state of Kentucky, but it turns out the state of Kentucky is full of metals companies. These are big companies, but they don't typically get together, okay? They kind of do their own thing. Well, we have in the headquarters of the Metals Innovation Initiative, which is the cluster located at the Innovation Campus at WKU here in Bowling Green, Kentucky, and that's a big deal. This is a fully funded group of companies that are actually going to teach us what they need. They say they need workforce. Well, now they have a collective group. That's called the Metals Innovation Initiative. So, you'll hear this term, M-I-two, you'll see this logo, and you'll hear that term, and that's something to be proud of here in Bowling Green. We created a collaborative smart space. Some of you guys have actually been out here, out there to see it. That's a mouthful, collaborative smart space. Collaborative smart space is a place for creative artistic professionals to gather and share their network, share their talent on a daily basis. It's a membership-based thing. You're gonna see it launched officially in November of this year. We soft-launched it earlier in the summer, and we already have 100 members. And these are some of the most talented people in the world. We're doing partnerships with the University of Southern California, the most famous film and media institution in the world, and they're partnering with us because of that space. We're partnering with MIT, one of the best tech companies in the world, here in Bowling Green because of this space. When they hear about what we're doing, people from all over started recognizing what great things were going on. We created a multi-phase market research program, and this is kind of important, because that collaborative smart space, it's about being smart. It's about us being smart as managers, listening to the creative people and what they need. What do they need? I don't know, right? We want to be active, we want to be inclusive, and so we created a program that would do that, go out and study it, and it's a very exhaustive thing. It was inexpensive, though, it was good. We created a workforce innovation lab, okay, inside of our collaborative smart space. We created, for the first time, a place where we can get together in a war room format and actually think about the workforce in non-traditional ways. We have tremendous workforce development, things going on in Bowling Green, the Chamber, the, I mean, we have the best, but there's, there was not a place where we could bring people together and actually think about those problems non-traditionally. Let me give you an example. There's a lot of retired people in Bowling Green. We don't want to leave, but those retired people oftentimes aren't a part of our workforce. They're not even on the books. They don't even sometimes know how to go back to work, and sometimes they might even feel insecure about it. So, part of that workforce innovation lab, what we're gonna do is we're gonna create a pilot program. We're gonna enable that part-time workforce that isn't currently on the books, and we think there's thousands of people, because every single time I tell anybody, retired teacher, police, these folks want to be a part of that program. And so, you'll actually be able to be hired, work when you want to, you don't have, you're not gonna be called in if you've got cyclic medical issues. Do you know how many people can't hold a job because they have cyclic medical issues? Well, there's technology out there that allows us to enable that workforce, and then they can elect when they want to be there and when they don't want to be there. And so, this is the thing I'm talking about, non-traditional thinking, creating it if it's not there for a specific purpose. So, I think that's probably all of my time here, but thank you all for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Steen.
Switching gears, as you all will recall, you all approved for us to give some small business aid incentives to those that were affected by the tornado some 10 months ago now. And so, I'd like to ask Sean Weeks to kind of give you the application process that we've finally, we've put together. We're ready to launch this for relief on our property taxes for those businesses and property owners in business that were affected December 11th of last year, along with some relief for their occupational tax. So, I'm gonna hand it off to Sean. Sean Weeks is our, I'm sorry, Sean Weeks, Assistant Chief Financial Officer in our Finance Department. Sean?
Jeff mentioned you all approved this back on March 15th, 2022, this program, so it allows up to 100% rebate on the city-only portion of property taxes, and up to 100% rebate of the net profits dependent on eligibility for commercial businesses in the affected tornado path. So, I wanted to walk you through a few things. If you go to our main webpage, let's try this, if you go to our main webpage, you'll see a new feature link here at the bottom. It'll say, "A Small Business Tornado Relief Program." So, that just went live just 30, 40 minutes ago. So, you'll be able to click on that, and I wanted to note, first off, that the deadline is not till 12/31/2023. We give you plenty of time to apply. So, in order to check your eligibility, there's a few things that you need to do. There's a lot of information here that walks you through the application process, where to apply, all the guidelines for the program that are set forth, and eligibility. So, the first thing that you need to do is check your address to make sure you're in the affected area. So, with IT's help, we have a tornado relief map here that you can click on. It's an interactive GIS map. It has a note that pops up to say this is designed to help you see if you meet the location requirement for this program. And once you do, you can see, you can see that there's a heat map here that shows you the path, went too far, the path of the tornado. So, all you need to do is you can enter an address here, and I'll check this, and you'll have one that pop up. You can go ahead and click on if that's the one you're searching for. It'll go right in, it'll say, "Possibly eligible pending approval. This is within the program boundaries. Please submit your application." You also have the ability to look at other parcels within the area, and you can just click on them. So, if you click on another parcel, you can do the exact same thing. Now, if you search for a parcel that is outside of the area, you'll have a pop-up that'll say, "Not eligible. This property is not within the program boundaries." So, it kind of walks you through that. So, that's step one that you need to do to be able to apply for this program. Step two is to make sure that you are current on all of your occupational taxes and property taxes. So, if you don't know, call our office at 270-393-3000. Make sure that you are current on all of your taxes, so to make sure that you're eligible. If you're not yet current, you have plenty of time to make sure to get current, because you have to 12/31/2023 to apply. Once you've determined your eligibility, you can fill out our application. It is online only. This will help us allow the committee to review your submission in a quick and efficient manner without having to worry about if it's being received or not through the mail. So, we'll be able to go directly online and apply for this, and we'll be able to see this. Once you click on that, you'll be able to see, it's a form here that, that is, that can change based on how you're gonna apply. So, you have your application name, your email address, and what are, what is this for? Is it for property owner, is it a business owner, or is it both? So, depending on which button you click on will depend on what information shows. So, if you click on business owner, you can see that there. You click on property owner, the information changes, or both. And it will walk you through the information for the property owner section, the business owner. There's a brief questionnaire to determine how you were affected by the tornado with a brief narrative, and then an affidavit to check the boxes to affirm several things. You can sign the document electronically at the bottom, and then you can submit it to So, I just wanted to take this opportunity to show, show all of you all what the work that has been done and to make sure that the public knows that this has started. I did want to thank several people that were involved in this process. From the Finance Department, David Line, Jennifer Phillips, and St. Martin all helped out. From the IT Department, we had Brad Stinson, Kyle Bearden, and Chase Lefford, and then from the City Manager's Office, Debbie Highland-West. So, it was, it was a large team effort to get this off the ground, that you all started this program for our citizens that were affected, and this will allow us to, to take this moving forward and start to get the rebates out there for individuals. Thank you all.
Thank you, Sean. And was there a memo that went out in the tax bills that stated this?
Yep. That was specific to the commercial property owners within the affected area. That was tied into the parcels, yes.
That was key information, and we look forward to this information getting out so people can execute and begin their applications. Thank you so much for the follow-through.
Thank you so much.
Okay, just a couple more things. We need to, I need to humbly ask you all to add two late file items to the agenda related to a grant that we would like to apply for, that the clock is ticking on, and those would be items, our municipal order 2022-28, and then municipal order 2022-229. If we can add those to the agenda, we just need a motion and a second for that.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second to add these to our agenda. Any discussion? None? Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
There'll also be a need for a closed session. I'd like Ashley to read the reasons for that tonight.
Pursuant to KRS 61811B, "For the purpose of deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by the city, its publicity would likely affect the value of the specific piece of property to be acquired or sold by the city. And see for discussion of pending litigation against the city."
So moved. Second.
Okay. Commissioner Hill has moved. We have a closed session, and Beasley-Brown seconded it. Any discussion? None? Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes.
And last but not least, those in the audience wishing to make public comments at the end of the regular session, there is a sign-up sheet on the, in the back corner of the room. Please sign that sheet if you want to make a public comment at the end of our regular agenda. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mizel. Our first item is our approval of minutes, regular meeting, September 20th, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley-Brown. Any discussion? None? Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-214.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Trevor Noble Jr. to the position of Service Technician in the Public Works Department.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey.
We have a vacancy in our Fleet Division, and I would like Aaron Holesy to step up and make the recommendation for this appointment. Aaron?
We do have a vacancy in our Fleet Division. These are all of our technicians that work on our hundreds of vehicles, pieces of equipment in the city, and it's a, it's a very small staff that do all of that work. We recently had a resignation, and so we recruited in our normal external and internal paths. We received five applications, and we interviewed four of those. Tonight, I would like to introduce Trevor Noble, who's with us tonight. He's in the white shirt. You can stay there. He's already standing. He currently works at Trace Diecast. He went to Edmiston County High School, and he does already have some of his ASC certifications that we look for for this position. Let me know if you have any questions.
Questions? All right. We have a motion on the floor, and let's make official. Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley-Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Congratulations, Trevor. All right. Next is Municipal Order Number 2022-215.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointments of Jacob Atkins, Emily Bryant, Joseph Botkin, Jeremy Gibson, Austin Griffin, Jeremy Harris, Austin Jones, Richard Nip, Austin Lilly, Stephen Metter, Jeffrey Ward, and Tyler West to the, to the position of Police Officer in the Police Department.
So moved. Second.
I'll say, moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley-Brown. Mr. Mizel.
So, a great night tonight. We have before us 12 great candidates to fill at the Police Department, and we're really excited. We are currently still below complement, 19 vacancies, but this will go a long way to get these, these ladies and gentlemen on our force, and I'd like to ask Aaron Holesy to step back up again and make the recommendations on this one.
All right. This is a very exciting night. We've been working on this. We've been taking applications since May or June, and I just want to remind you all and anyone in the public who might be interested, we take applications for Police Officer year round. So, you don't have to necessarily wait for a particular window to open. Anytime is good. We're always doing our, our testing for that. We have a schedule, so anytime that someone wants to apply, and if they do get hired before an academy is starting, we can actually hire them into a position where they can start training full-time and start getting benefits as a, as a police cadet, too. So, just, just a reminder for that. For right now, we will be recommending the appointment to directly into the Police Officer position, except for one who's already in that Police Cadet II position. We had 87 applicants. That's fantastic. Really proud of the partnership between Human Resources and Police Department to get that many applications. We worked with about 30 that passed POPs, which is a pretty consistent number for us, and we enter, we interviewed 15 individuals, and you're gonna be meeting 12 of those tonight. I would like for you all to stand as I say your name, please. First, we have Jacob Atkins, Emily Bryant, Joseph Botkin, Jeremy Gibson, I'm not sure he's here tonight, right, Austin Griffin, Jeremy Harris, Austin Jones, Richard Nip, Austin Lilly, Stephen Metter, Jeffrey Ward, and Tyler West, who is not able to be with us tonight. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Holesy. I just want to say, it's a fine, fine candidates out here. We appreciate you putting your name in and putting your life at risk, and we want to recognize your families that are here with you. So, if you would, let's just start off with our first candidate. Your family stand, and then we'll just kind of go around the room. We're not introducing, I just want to see who's here with you, if you have family. All right, wonderful. All right. All right, so next? Okay, all right, next? You have family? All right. Thank you. All right, sir?
Alone.
Alone. Well, your, your family of blues here behind you, too. All right? In the back?
Right over there.
Hello. I know you're proud of them. All right, here? Very nice. Thank you. Right here? Oh, wow. Okay, and right here? All right, and all the family, please stand up at the same time, because we'll do this together.[1794.41][1794.41] We appreciate your sacrifice, your prayers for them as they go through the academy. And we look forward to bringing you into our, our force of blue. So we're very proud of you in this endeavor. And let's make this official, commissioners. So roll call please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations.
I know y'all want to stay for this entire meeting, but you're welcome to go celebrate with your family this time. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on, municipal order number twenty-two-two-two sixteen.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Carwin Steele to the Human Rights Commission.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. I will take the honor to recognize the young man that is being, I am nominating today for the Human Rights Commission. His name is Demetrius. He has Carwin Steele. Are you here tonight? Carwin, did you stand up? So let me introduce Carwin. So he is a graduate of Western Kentucky University. He is from Chicago, Illinois. And so he came to Bowling Green on his own. Demetrius, you and I share a job that you've had and I worked at Duck, but you had a much more prestigious job at Downing University. And he is currently, he has quite a resume, but he's general motors, production group leader, over thirty employees. He graduated in two thousand eighteen from Western Kentucky University. He actually even had a job which many of us worked through college and you worked at Chuck E. Cheese, so very impressive. But we welcome you, Demetrius. And by the way, he's looking for other employment. And so I will put his name out there and we welcome you to serve on this Human Rights Commission. So thank you very much for being here. Commissioners?
Congrats, so those of you Alpha for Alpha too. My family is, is all legacy, I'm not Alpha, but family's rooted in nineteen oh six.
All right, Demetrius, we're going to make this official. Roll call please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations, Demetrius.
All right, municipal order number twenty-two-two-two seventeen.
Municipal order approving the reappointments of Eric Gill, Sue Perigin, Steve Speakman, and David Sowers to the Contractors Licensing Board.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Hold on, Mr. Mizel. Demetrius, did you have family with you? You have been? Okay, the board. All right, I want to recognize, thank you for the board for being here tonight as well, thank you. All right, Mr. Mizel.
This is you, Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Appointments.
I, my apologies.
Appointments, sorry.
So we have two reappointments. This is Eric Gill, Sue Perigin, Steve Speakman, David Sowers, all in the contracting license board. They have continuously served, served our city well, they would like to continue to serve and I'm appreciative to that. Sue, you're here tonight, so thank you. I get invited often to, to hear a little bit from the contractors board and I appreciate that. But I recommend all individuals, five of them to continue, four of them to continue serving.
Can I say a little something here?
Absolutely.
We have the, our director, our new director, Holly Warren, here with us. Holly, will you stand up? Holly has been working there for fourteen years? Twenty-one years, okay. Bob Apling was the director and he retired recently and Holly was, you know, hands down our, our, our first choice to, to succeed him. And, and we, we really appreciate the work that this board does. I, I will say that I had no idea of the complexities of, of all of this. But, but don't prepay for your contracting work. Do call the, the Contractors Licensing Board and speak with Holly and her staff and they will tell you whether they are licensed above-board contractors. Just make that phone call, that's what they're there for. Every month that goes by, there are people that are being, are being ripped off by unscrupulous contractors. So don't prepay. If they do the work, then you pay, right? So, thank you.
Holly, thank you for being here, thank you for sending us your resume today and congratulations on being named as the contractor licensed, so appreciate that. All right, we have, any further discussion?
Do I need to abstain from this vote?
Yeah, well, sure. It's up, it's up to her to abstain from the vote.
You don't have to, some haven't, some have. You don't have to.
I'll vote for the other three.
All right, roll call.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty-two-two-two eighteen.
Municipal order authorizing renewal of bid number twenty-two-one-zero-five for fire department uniforms from Galls LLC of Lexington, Kentucky and Nats Outdoor Sports of Bowling Green, Kentucky based on unit prices.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
As you know, the, the fire department needs gear and we bid this out in fiscal year twenty-one with the option to renew it a couple times. This would be the last renewal and we are recommending to renew with CMS uniforms and equipment as well as Nats. In your packets, you have those letters from those companies, I'm sorry, Galls and from Nats on their commitment to renew. Galls, I believe, held their price the same. Nats due to some price increases, inflation obviously is raising theirs just slightly. We will rebid this though before June of this coming next year before the, end of the fiscal year. So this is kind of a short year that we'll be using these commitments for these prices. So recommend the renewal on these two. And Chief Brooks is here, can answer any questions you might have.
Hey, any questions from our commissioners? Not at this time, roll call please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty-two-two-two nineteen.
Municipal order approving a contract through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract with Hobdye Dye and Reed, Inc. of Bowling Green, Kentucky for the purchase of a compact excavator and attachments in the amount of seventy-two thousand, sixty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Moved by Commissioner Carlos Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
We had this capital item in the FY twenty-three budget back in the summer. We are replacing a two thousand six Caterpillar backhoe for the cemetery. We found another piece of equipment that's going to work a lot better for us. It's, it's more compact to get in, in and out of the cemetery. Found it on Sourcewell, which is one of our co-ops we use for purchasing, similar to the state pricing contract. And met budget and looking to, to award it, recommend award to the Hobdye Dye and Reed Company for seventy-two thousand, sixty-one dollars, which includes all the unnecessary attachments that we need to use with this piece of equipment. Brent Belcher is here, can answer any questions you might have on this purchase, but this is for the cemetery department, division.
Hey, questions? None, roll call please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty-two-two-two twenty.
Municipal order authorizing a sub-recipient agreement between the City of Bowling Green and Bowling Green Human Rights Commission for Year Nineteen Community Development Block Grant Program, funding in an amount of thirty-five thousand dollars.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Carlos Bailey, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
Back in the summer, you all approved the Year Nineteen CDBG Annual Action Plan, which laid out the various projects for our, for our partnering agency, agencies. We got approval from that, from HUD here recently, a couple weeks ago. Tonight, we would like to do the sub-recipient agreement with the Bowling Green Human Rights Commission for thirty-five thousand dollars to provide services on workshops, public events, educating the public on this program, information about fair housing laws, housing discrimination. And Brent and Nick obviously works on, they work on this, they're here tonight, can answer any questions. But we are recommending that we award the thirty-five thousand dollars to the Human Rights Commission tonight. Who are here with us?
See, hello?
I would like to just say thank you all for showing up. So many times agencies that are receiving money from the city don't show up. So thank you so much for taking time out of your night to show up for this.
I would like to say just teaching about like the fair housing issues is important. We know that, you know, it's one of those sad things that you don't hear about and some people don't even know about the things and they don't know their rights. But once you educate someone and they know their rights, then they have like a firm foundation that they can stand on. So I appreciate you guys doing that and it's a great grant.
Okay. No further questions, comments? Roll call please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty-two-two-two-two-one.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for law enforcement protection program grant funds through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the purchase of electro-muscular disruption technology for the police department in an amount up to two hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
We heard about this grant from Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, the law enforcement protection program. It can be used for a lot of different things, body armor, firearms. But we will be needing new tasers in the next couple of years. And so Chief Delaney worked with Nick Cook on this and we are proposing, we applied for the, I think the max was two, two sixty-six, six fourteen. This is going to go a long way to get us started on replacing our tasers that are going out of date. This is, would get us a hundred and thirty-four tasers with batteries, with the cartridges, loading docks, all that kind of stuff. And get us well on our way of replacing the two hundred and sixty-eight, well, that's why, that's cartridges. Replacing the full complement of the tasers. Chief Delaney is here tonight, can answer any questions on this. In your packets, you see the breakdown of, of the numbers and the, the total cost. But I think this gets us about half of what we need and gets us going on the five-year, five-year replacement program for this new technology. These are the, the better, a better taser and our old ones are, are toward the end of their useful life. Chief, did that cover everything?
Hey, any questions? Roll call please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty-two-two-two-two-two.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application and acceptance of grant funds with the Federal Transit Administration for Federal Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Two Transportation Assistance under the Section Fifty-three Ten program.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
But tonight, we're coming to you with requests to submit and apply and accept it if we get it. We think we're going to get this. But it's six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars with a twenty percent match for, from FTA. And we are proposing to use this money to purchase two vehicles to expand our ADA para-transit program. These, these funds are going to, you know, be able to, we'll use these for complimentary door-to-door pickup for our public transit system. And I'd like to thank Nick and Brent for working on this. We think this is going to go a, a long way and these are expensive pieces of equipment. So six fifty-five with a match of one thirty-one, which is roughly twenty percent, is a pretty good bargain. So we are recommending that we pursue this and need your approval.
Thank you. Questions? All right, once again, great job, Nick. He's right there. The man behind the curtain that gets many things done for our city. All right, roll call please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty-two-two-two-two-three.
Municipal order accepting transfer of property located at three zero four East Eleventh Avenue and authorizing the mayor to execute a deed from Community Action of Southern Kentucky, Inc. to the City of Bowling Green and further approving an amendment to the fixed route and para-transit transportation service agreement with Community Action of Southern Kentucky, Inc.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
So this is kind of a combo. First, we would like to take over the Transit Operations Center right here, down here on the corner of Eleventh and Center. And back in two thousand nine, we jointly purchased that with Community Action. And we are, we're ready to do some remodeling to it, improve it. And would, would like to go ahead and take full ownership of that. Second part of this is the agreement on the para-transit and the, the sharing of cost. And all that information is, is in your packet. Basically, going back to, to the center, we used to share capital, but we were proposing to go ahead and do a twenty-five-hundred-dollar cap, I believe, on, on any capital expenditures. And I'd like to ask Brent Childers to come up and clarify anything that I missed on that. But hopefully I covered the most of it.
It is in the ballpark.
Okay.
So what it is, is as part of our contract with Community Action as the operator, they were responsible for maintenance of the property. Since we both had co-title and anything above twelve thousand, five hundred, we agreed to split as co-owners. And now what we're saying is anything above twenty-five hundred, we will take on as the owner of the property. Really what it came down to is we didn't want to, we wanted them, because since we're paying for maintenance of the property through the contract, for them to take care of the incidental maintenance things. But as we were about to embark on a large renovation of the project, their contribution to that project would have been probably seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars. And so they made the decision to just turn the property over to us, we'll provide the match for that, we'll take over the maintenance responsibilities. And this kind of cleans up about a thirteen-year coexistence of ownership of property between the city and Community Action. So this is a big step forward for us moving forward with the transit program. Any questions?
Good, all right, thank you. No further questions, roll call please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty-two-two-two-two-four.
Municipal order accepting a donation from Houchens Food Group for Duncan Hines Days.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
As you all have heard the announcement, we are very excited about the Duncan Hines Days next year in two thousand twenty-three. June fifth through eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. This is going to be a monster event and we have been fortunate enough, I'm going to hit both two items here together. We, we have been fortunate to get some donations. This first one is from Houchens Food Group. They're going to pretty much buy everybody ice cream, is my understanding. And cover the ice cream social, fifteen thousand dollars donation there. Your next item that you all, I'll go ahead and introduce, the twenty-thousand, two thousand twenty-two-five is accepting a donation from Tyson Foods. They're not even in place yet here in Bowling Green and they're all, they're already participating in the community with a donation of twenty thousand dollars to the Duncan Hines Day Festival next year. Like to thank both of these companies for their, they're just excellent corporate citizens of Bowling Green. Houchens, long, long time, Houchens Food Group has been here since beginning of time, I feel like. And Tyson is the new kid on the block already pitching in and participating in our community. And kudos to them, so Talia is organizing all this, got a lot of work to do. She's got a good, good team though put together and we're, we're excited for next year.
Wow, this is incredible news.
This is incredible news. We know this event is kind of a historic rebirth and generation of recognizing Duncan Hines and bringing this back because this is going to be a community-wide celebration where every restaurant, every business that can contribute and be part of this and we're really excited about this and we brought Talia, she's brought great ideas with us and she's going out and getting the cash to help it out. So wonderful. Appreciate that and the continued work and looking forward to this as we ramp up. And I saw how you used the BG Harvest Festival to kind of launch the Duncan Hines and working with Western and, and a lot of good things happening. So, well done. Commissioners?
Yeah, thank you. I heard the, what's the brewery's name again downtown? The Gasper River Brewery, sorry about that. They, they had a couple, couple evenings of a kickoff for the Duncan Hines and, and I was told that it was packed and huge and lots of fun. So this, yeah, that's big when the brewery runs out of beer. That's like, you know, Kane's running out of chicken. Yeah. So anyway, I heard it was great and that's a great way to kick it off with the Harvest Fest and the Bourbon and Brew Fest and downtown was amazing over the weekend. Lots of fun.
Further questions? All right. Roll call please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. And then as Mr. Mizel's teed it up, Municipal Order Number 2022-225, is there any further? Do you need to read it? Okay, go ahead.
Municipal order accepting a donation from Tyson Foods for Duncan Hines Days.
They'll move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Again, we want to thank Tysons and Houchens for their donation. Very excited about this and hopefully this will spark some interest of many of our other corporate sponsored donations out there and we'll put the challenge out to our community to participate in this. All right. No further questions? Roll call please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-226.
Municipal order approving tax increment financing district summary of 2021 incremental revenue and authorizing distributions to the appropriate recipients.
They'll move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin, Mr. Mizel. Since 2008, we've had a 50-block TIF district, tax incremental financing. The way this works generally is we capture the growth in taxes since 2007 in these 50 blocks and this makes the 14th year for our distribution. And we have, for the last 14 years, including this one, we have distributed roughly $8.9 million of incremental tax revenues for this area. Katie worked on this calculation, her department, Sean and Zane are here tonight, but basically we are proposing the calculation, it is what it is. We have 80% to distribute and that equates to $1,279,866. And I'm going to turn it over to Katie if you all have any questions on these numbers. Everything, I believe, is in your packet. Katie, do you have anything to add?
Then I would like to thank Sean and Zane. They did all of the work on this. I didn't.
These are all the distribution recipients, Block 6 IRB, Medical Center WKU, By One County Authority. So is that county authority?
It is. That's the authority. If you note the colors, everything shaded in blue is actually going to be paid to the authority and then the authority will make the additional distributions. We've got the Block 6 IRB and then the adjusted city increment account are the other two distributions and then, of course, the city's 20%.
It's quite a complex calculation.
Authority also distributes the state portion as well, so all that goes out together. So they combine the two. So it goes out to those particular recipients.
14 years ago, we built a 50-page Excel spreadsheet and fortunately I was able to hand that off to Sean many, many, many moons ago and...
I'm working to gift it to Zane, so that's, that's our, that's the plan.
Sean, real briefly for the public, real briefly, explain what TIF is and what it does for our community.
Very briefly. So like Jeff said, what we did in 2006 and 2007, depending on which portion of the block, we had an original and an expanded section. And we look at the increment pieces. So we took a snapshot of the property taxes, the net profits and the withholdings that were generated by each of those businesses in those particular areas. And then each following year, we looked at what, the new investment that was coming into the area. So the reinvestment downtown, the new buildings, and looked at that increment and we captured that particular portion of the increment and took 80% of that and distributed on. Based on the size of some projects, some money went to some of these entities that you see there and then that allowed for more reinvestment in the area.
Is there any more real estate still available for someone to invest in today?
We're always looking for, for new entrants. Yes.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
I want to make a small comment on this too. I want to point, I hope Jeff is okay with that. He is actually the leader of that board that, and I serve on that board alongside of him. And it is a very complex kind of a thing that we're doing down there on the, it's called the Tax Incremental Finance Board or the Authority, better known as the Authority. And, and it's just a pleasure to serve alongside Jeff as, as he's leading us through these next, this next year. So thank you.
Sun sets in 2038, so we have some time left on this thing and a lot of exciting things are happening. As you know, we just announced a new partner at, at the RAP, what we call the RAP, next to the ballpark. We'll also have some new apartments coming online on College Street there, just down the street here soon. And so a lot of things are happening. We're seeing some development, some hints of development down close to the river that you'll see come along hopefully pretty soon, some big announcements. And so it's an exciting time. On top of that, we're going to be working on our riverfront development, our park just across the river. So these next 10, 15, 20 years, you're going to see a lot of change from here to the river that's made up mostly of the TIF district.
Really looking forward to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. No further questions? All right. Roll call.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-227.
Municipal order approving fiscal years 2022, 2023 through 2025, 2026, capital improvement program for the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky.
They'll move.
Second.
By Commissioner Carlos Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel. This is our capital improvement program that you all approved, the FY23 portion of it with the budget, but this also captures what we think is out there for the next couple of fiscal years. I'm going to hand it off to Katie, kind of give you the highlights. She's prepared a really excellent memo. Katie, you want to take this over?
I also have to give credit to Megan Van Meter, our procurement manager. This is, as Sean is passing down to Zane and gifting him the TIF, I am passing down and gifting to Megan the capital improvement program as we move forward. But essentially what you'll see on the memo, the bullets are all of the FY23 from the time we adopted the budget to the end of September approximately, those changes that have occurred. As we mentioned before, I want to do a more frequent update to this plan. So approximately quarterly, kind of like a budget amendment, we would come through and present to you any additional changes that have occurred, particularly in the current fiscal year or so of projects are either coming in over budget or we've had to readjust some priorities based on various circumstances. We would then present that information to you, like I said, approximately quarterly. But like I said, this does take into consideration all of the changes based on all the municipal orders, all the actions the board has taken presently through September 30th on a lot of these projects. And of course, the out-year projects are based on strategic goal planning, departmental needs, community requests. All of those are flexible. They may or may not happen in the year in which we presented them at this point. We won't know until we get into the budget process for that year as to what we can afford. Again, if priorities shift. So all of those are just really kind of putting them on the radar.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions or comments? None at this time? Roll call please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2022-48, it's our second reading and is binding.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving amendment number one to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2023.
They'll move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Danae Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel. And this is our second reading, unless there's any questions, comments at this time? Okay. There are none? Roll call please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-228.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for state and local cybersecurity grant program funds through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the purchase of a password management system for the Information Technology Department in the amount of $67,211.
They'll move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Carlos Bailey, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel. I'm going to discuss these two late-fall items together, if that's okay, Mayor.
Sure.
We, this, this one popped up on our radar here just recently. This is a state and local cybersecurity grant program that we got wind of. There's quite a bit of money in there and as you all know, there, these cyber attacks are happening more and more often and we're, we're doing all we can to fight these things off. We're going with the dual, duo authent, authenti, I can't even say the word.
Authentic.
Authenti, authentication. Thank you. We're, we've got the strongest firewalls we can, we can get. We're making people change passwords, but you, you can't seem to do enough on these things. And once they get you, I mean, they get you and you're, you're at their mercy. So we thought this was an excellent opportunity to, to, to help beef up our security here. This first item would be for purchases and implementation of a business password manager organization-wide for all of our devices, basically, right? We, we've got so many devices now that we're keeping up with, with city phones, city tablets, desktops. It's on, cameras, it's on and on and on how, how we could get broke into. So this would go toward that. It's a 10% match. This would be about roughly $75,000 to buy that, that equipment, that software, whatever it is, that we could use for password management and securing encrypted data, all that kind of stuff. And then the second item that we've got before you tonight quickly is $328,000 and five, $328,598. And we think the best use of this fund, this, this, this funding would be for us to hire a cybersecurity specialist in-house and fund this thing for, for three years, maybe plus, to focus on protection, identifying our, and resolving our vulnerabilities. Danita and her staff are up to their eyeballs right now with everything that they have to cover and be responsible for. But this $328,000 does require a 10% match, which only $36,000. This would, this would cover salary and fringe for a cybersecurity, a system engineer that we could bring in-house, responsible for developing an improvement and incident response plan, disaster recovery, data backups, configuration of the system, on and on and on, endpoint protection, firewalls, email security. We, we found that a lot of our holes and gaps come through our email when people click on something they don't need to click on, that sort of thing. So I'm going to, I'm going to stop talking. Danita's here, Nick is here, can answer any of your questions on this, but we think this is a, an excellent opportunity. We don't know that there's going to be, the timeline and window is so short on this thing. If we could get this off, that's why we, we did a late-fall, we think we could compete very well with this and get this, this funding. Danita, did I miss anything? Or questions? So the second one is 10% on our end and... They're both 10% match. Yes.
Match. And what we're hoping to do with the position is actually use the training expenses that we will have as that, as that match.
Questions, comments? This is on 2022, sorry, -228, roll call.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Sorry about that. Can you read that?
Municipal order number 2022-229, 229. Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for state and local cybersecurity grant program funds through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for cybersecurity personnel for the Information Technology Department in the amount of $328,598.
They'll move.
Second.
Perigin and Beasley Brown.
Thank you. Further questions, comments? Roll call.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Okay. Ms. Jackson, check for public comments. Our next scheduled meeting will be November 1st, 2022. Okay. Okay. Chair from Orleans, you want to cut them up? On up, you have up to five minutes, Chair.
Okay. I know the mayor is doing a good job. He went to the city board, the county board, and told the county board what's up. You know, he started, he stood up to the county board and find me information that I needed. Now, I really wanted the city commissioner, city commissioners to go with the mayor to stand up to the city board, the county board. That didn't happen. Do you know the reason why I'm saying that we need a discount for disability? Do you know the reason why? Because I know that half of the people living here is on disability. And they don't need to worry about taxes for cars because some of them are homeless and they're living in their cars. So why would you, why wouldn't you help, help them, help this community with a discount? I'm asking for a 10% discount. The mayor went to the board and the board said, we need to talk to the state representative. So I would like the city commissioners, one of you, to go to the city, the state representative and ask for a discount. Okay? And then people are living in tents in this town and you know how cold it is? And what we do need is another homeless shelter or the city commissioners to give out tents, to stand up, to stand up and help the homeless. Because there is a lot of homeless people in this town. Some of them don't work, maybe, I understand, but the ones who are working and on the street should not be there. And the mayor, I was waiting for one of you to, to stand with the mayor to fight the county board. And I couldn't, you wouldn't do it. I tried and you don't get it. Everybody in this town, there's tons of people on disability in this town. You don't get it. But that's okay. So all I want to know is if you can help the homeless. That's all I'm asking. You know? Either another homeless shelter or the discount for disability. Either another homeless shelter or the discount for disability. Either one. So. Okay.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay. This concludes our meeting for tonight and we thank you everybody for coming here.